We'll now call to order the February 11th Oshkosh Common Council meeting. Pam, can you please take the role?
Allison Osby, here.
Herman.
Here.
Mugroar.
Here.
Crowsey.
Here.
Paschal.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Paul Mary.
Here.
Present seven.
Next, Councilmember Allison Osby will join us with the invocation and will be followed by Lucinda Hausworth and Austin Hausworth, leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Austin, certificate for you and Lucinda for you. Why don't you say your name, your grade, and what school you go to and your favorite subject?
I go to Jacob Shapiro. I'm in fourth grade. My name is Lucinda and my favorite subject is math.
My name is Austin Hausworth. I'm in fifth grade. I go to Jacob Shapiro and my favorite subject is science.
Perfect. Well, thank you so much for leading us this evening. Enjoy your evening.
Next, we have a presentation by Greater Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods, the 2019 Updates.
Hello. Hopefully, in your packet, you received our year-end report from 2019. Also on your desk, I did give you a quick update. I got 11 slides to get through tonight and keep it hopefully rather short, giving you the highlights from our 2019 year-end report. Really here, my name is Pam Ruder, by the way. I'm the Executive Director of Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods here in Oshkosh, and I'm here to say thank you. You are a strong supporter of what we were used to be known as GOHNI, Greater Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods Incorporated. We still use that acronym. It's our website, gohni.org, and it is still officially our full name, but we've learned over the course of the last year and a half that nobody knew what that acronym stood for. So, we are now, Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods have rebranded and really very thankful to be here tonight. We've got a couple of board members, Art Ratchan and Alan Davis, joining us, and I've got a staff member. I'll introduce her a little bit later on. But, Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods, we're working with the city of Oshkosh to strengthen our neighborhoods from the grassroots level on up. It's our residents coming to Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods. Forming neighborhood associations is one of the things that we do, but it's really about an opportunity for neighbors to know neighbors. That's what we want to have happen. Our board is exceptional. You've got the list in our report. We recorded 100% board giving in 2019, which is again, because they had 100% board giving in 18 as well. 2019 was about forging new partnerships for Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods, and we are really enthused about the direction that we are moving in. We have a working board. In other words, they are all on different committees and help with us gaining those new partnerships, but we really are looking at strengthening and revitalizing Oshkosh Neighborhoods. The new logo is certainly helping us have a clearer message in the community. What do we do? Those neighborhood associations, good news, in 2019, we added three. Fox Chase formed in, it was supposed to be January, they had a snowstorm. It turned out February. Menominee North in May, and Midtown came together in late September. What we're trying to do with those residents is empower them to be leaders in managing their neighborhood issues and to participate fully in determining the future of their neighborhood, growing them to 18 recognized neighborhood associations. This is what I refer to as our Hawaii-Alaska view. We brought Fox Chase from the southwest corner of the city into the inlet area, and we brought North Park down from the northern side of the city. So, 18 now, but room to grow, and we were pleased with the three in 2019 and have many leads going forward. In fact, March 16th, looking for the next one coming forward. So, good news there. Once we have our neighborhood associations together, we meet monthly with them as a group on now the second Monday. So, we got together last night with our Neighborhood Alliance. It's a forum for those neighborhoods to exchange ideas and really advocate for changes that are important to them. We also team up with Neighborhood Partners Network through Goodwill to offer educational opportunities for our neighborhood core teams. The neighborhood development is truly best defined as relationship management. Cora Strand is our neighborhood coordinator. She works with those core teams as they are building their neighborhood association and helps them get organized, but once they are established, then it's working on their community building and engagement needs and sustaining the neighborhood associations. So, in Oshkosh, again, it's unique. They're all very different. They've come to us. We're a resource, but it's really educating them about what opportunities there are here in Oshkosh. Besides the three new neighborhood associations, some of the year-end success measures for us, we really are excited about the 4,201 volunteer hours that are recorded by our neighborhood associations that's got an economic value of $106,831. This year, we tracked a little bit differently along with our volunteer hours. We asked our neighborhood associations to give us their events and attendance and something new, so it's taken a little bit of nudging to get them to record accurately, but we think it's a better reflection of the events and participation that is happening in our neighborhood associations. The real value of those 90 events is the opportunity to connect with your neighbor. The social connectedness is something that we put a high value on. River East will be awarded the volunteerism award for their significant increase in volunteer hours, and that'll happen at the State of the City event on March 9th. We also invest in branding of our neighborhood associations. Historic Jackson got a brand-new logo, and maybe you saw this last month, some signs going up on Jackson to recognize them as an established or recognized neighborhood association. Cora, again, is that neighborhood coordinator, also has done a great job increasing our presence on social media, be on Facebook, we're on Twitter, Instagram, and LinkedIn. Our dollars that the city supports with us, we really look to leverage those, but overall, neighborhood revitalization represents 49% of our budget use in 2019. Real estate development will jump in 2020 as I'll highlight the property that we're working on, and honestly, we haven't paid our contractors anything for that work that they've done already in 2019. As a 501(c)(3), we can leverage the public support or the city dollars with private contributions, and we are happy to grow that to a total community investment valued at $251,000 and some dollars. Part of our neighborhood revitalization is our partnership with Rock the Block Oshkosh. It's a collaboration with Habitat for Humanity, Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods, and the city of Oshkosh. We held our first event in 2019 in the Sacred Heart Neighborhood Association. We brought in 130 volunteers. They worked on multiple projects at 23 households and Stakebauer Park in Sacred Heart Neighborhood Association. What's really exciting to see is that lasting change that's happening with our Rock the Block Oshkosh. The neighborhood came together, and now they know more neighbors, and they are continuing to be welcoming and social. As we look, whoops, one of the before and after pictures from Rock the Block Oshkosh here in Oshkosh. Pictures speak volumes, but we've also developed with the partnership with the city. Stephen Wiley has done a score sheet on those properties in Sacred Heart that we worked on, and we saw an increase by five percentage points with those properties. So, that's important that we can measure the impact, but again, it's those social connections that are hard to measure but truly have a significant value. Through the neighborhood association work, we also have seen an uptick in the loan programs. The sold-on Oshkosh went from six in 2018 to 17 in 2019. We saw the increase of the owner-occupied rehabilitation loans jump significantly as well. We promote those programs with Rock the Block and at our other presentations, and it's certainly a great tool for improving properties in our neighborhood associations. Rock the Block 2020 is underway. We will be out in full impact. We received 51 applications before the October 1st deadline from the Congress Fields Neighborhood Association. We are hopeful that Mother Nature will cooperate with us. We were in April last year, wasn't great, moved it back to May this year. Keep your fingers crossed. Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods did some events that were our own. We did a neighborhood night at the Leech in July last year, did a Get to Know Your Neighbor activity. The Tuesday Night Concert Series is our partner with that, and really a nice opportunity to get our messaging out. They had 1,300 people in attendance that night. So, again, for us, for awareness, was a great partnership. On August 6th is always our National Neighborhood Night Out, and we had the police and fire department out there. Neighborhoods got creative with the 10 block parties that happened all in one night, and we appreciate the opportunity for the council members to go and meet your neighbors. A new one this year for us that we celebrated was National Good Neighbor Day, instituted back in 1976. It is always September 28th, and we love this one. This year, we did a pledge, had people take the pledge to be a good neighbor, had 126 people do that. We were at the farmer's market collecting those pledges, also did a presentation to the Oshkosh North Communities Program, and they took the pledge. So, really a nice opportunity for us to celebrate being a good neighbor. The pledge was last year. We're still thinking about what we're going to do. September 28th next year is a Monday night. What we did do with one of our neighborhoods, they chose that as their opportunity to distribute welcome bags. Anybody, Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods supported our neighborhood associations with those bags. We had our friends from, was then Bemis, now Amcor. They took a lunch hour and had volunteers pack the 150 bags that were distributed by our neighborhood association. The real estate development is another angle or avenue for Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods as we look to strengthen our neighborhoods, one property at a time. We believe that it's not just improving this property, but it's going to lift the entire neighborhood and community with the work that we are doing. Got a little bit of a delay with the early cold weather and snow in October, as we were going to get the exterior painted this fall. Have to delay that to spring, but it is amazing already what new windows and new doors have done to this property. We had an investment from the Kinsel Foundation to help towards our real estate development project, and it's coming along, but it is a process. With this particular property, purchased 83 Frankfurt, there was already a vacant lot next to it, 87 Frankfurt, so we are combining those two lots to enhance, again, that particular property. Going to put up a new garage. It was in very much need of being torn down. So, it's a process, and we're getting there. I do want to just briefly get into 2020. We did some community presentations last year and are going to continue those again. Service groups, we've got a Rotary presentation lined up, Learning and Retirement in the Fall. Big news will be coming forward to you as well. On March 16th, at the Oshkosh Convention Center, we'll do a 2020 Luncheon Learn. Many of our city leaders will be there to talk directly to realtors, mortgage lenders, inspectors, and other people that deal with selling and property management here in Oshkosh. We want to push those city loans again for 2020 and see continued growth with those, but we recognize it's about educating, and so bringing them all together in one group will help us relay that messaging. Again, we'll be at the farmer's market, and again, we'll have our signature events, Rock the Block in May, Neighborhood Night at the Leech will be the 7th in July, National Neighborhood Night Out on August 4th, and National Good Neighbor Day, always September 28th. Exciting news for 2020. Oshkosh Senior Center received a $152,000 Bader Foundation grant. We were partners with that. We are going to be responsible for the community outreach. It's connecting seniors and technology, but it's really trying to find those isolated seniors, and what better way is to use our neighborhoods to identify where those isolated seniors might be. So, we're excited to partner on that particular grant, again partnering with the Rock the Block Oshkosh. That was a three-year commitment. We started in 2019. We'll go through 2021. Can't tell you too much about this next one, Good Neighbor Grants. I can tell you, we have a private donor that wants to beautify Oshkosh, so we're looking, again, to leverage those dollars and figure out an opportunity for our neighborhoods to do just that. So, too soon to tell you more about that, but it is hopefully coming soon this spring. You can find us online, again, at gohni.org. Email, there's three names there. I mentioned myself and Cora. We did just add Stephanie Carlin to our staff. Steph is our Community Outreach Coordinator. It is in conjunction with the Bader Foundation grant. She will be that outreach coordinator for that position, but she's going to help us overall as well. Maybe you saw her at the Business Expo. Steph was there already handing out the mints, and again, the tagline with the mints, "Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods wants you to talk to your neighbor. The mints might help."
They make passion smell better.
The other big news for Steph, in 2019, we were able to raise through grants through the community foundation and matching individual donor grants, or gifts to that. We have the $12,000 for the block party trailer. Steph's first job is to get the block party trailer off the ground. Our hope is to have it operational and ready to go for our neighborhood associations to utilize a one-stop shop for having a block party. Steph has already met with Kathy Snell, Special Events Coordinator, and going through logistically what is it going to really take to make that happen here in Oshkosh. It's been very successful in other communities, and we're excited that that is going to be done. All right. I believe we hit our benchmarks in 2019 with strengthening our Oshkosh Neighborhoods. Really, though, excited about the future with Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods. I see us growing additional partnerships and our reach even further in 2020. So, again, thank you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam, do you want to ask Steph to come up and introduce her, the new staff?
Steph said no.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, we see you. Welcome. Just a couple of quick questions off the presentation that I have, and that is, so one of the slides, you were talking about leveraging the city dollars with other investors, that the total community investment was $251,000. Does that include the $106,000 in kind for the volunteer hours?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Okay. All right. And then, we talked a little bit earlier. Council can expect to see kind of an accounting, a breakdown as to the public dollar side of this and how that got spent and what some of those outcomes were, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Fantastic. And I just encourage anyone on that, May, Rock the Block. I did it last year. Okay, I was the fair weather fan before the snow hit, but it was a lot of fun out there working in the neighborhoods, and so if you get a chance to join them in May this year, they're over in Congress Field Neighborhoods, it's a great time. Maybe you should bring the party trailer.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have the first opportunity for citizen statements to council. Citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes. Must address items that are not listed on the council agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting. Must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. Pam, do we have anyone registered to speak?
Yes, we do. Larry Luther, 23 East New York Avenue.
Hi, Larry. Come on up. Welcome.
Good evening. As I said, my name's Larry Luther, live at 23 East New York Avenue. My concern is the TLP, the halfway, the House for Sexual Predators, 1105 Jefferson. That house has been in place for nine years. I made a statement nine years ago to the council at that time. I've also contacted the county and the state, and everyone's pointing their fingers. It's their responsibility. We've had issues over the years such as extracurricular sexual activities going on at the facilities, alleged drug dealings, handing off stuff. I have two small grandkids, and when I, no, I have them outside, I'm very cautious to watch where they go. These individuals have went beyond their boundaries, which they're entitled to, but stay away from my kids. And we have met with, well, first of all, TRINA Team is what the organization that owns the house, and they're self-managing. They have their own person that checks on them. They're supposed to check on them three times a day around the clock. Well, I've seen some of their manuscripts of what they did. Well, they come at 11:55 a.m. Well, then they're back at 12:15 p.m. Then they're back at 1:30. That's not around the clock. And my concern is, you know, we were never given a heads-up, you know, on what this happened, how it's going to affect our community, and what this organization is. It's, they house eight residents, occupants, and it's a revolving door where they stay from, you know, two days to 60 days, I've been informed. And I have met with Deborah, which is very kind to listen to me, and I have met with Lieutenant Brian, it might be incorrectly pronounced, the name, Shawldes from the Oshkosh Police Department. We met with Department Correction, Probation, and Parole at the Oshkosh Police Department during this last summer. I had a meeting with Gordon Hints. He came to the house back in August, while he was going to check on and get back in touch with. Well, we did not hear anything back. And just bottom line, you know, is there anything we can do? That's what I'm trying to ask.
So, Larry, I think we spoke on the phone several months ago.
Yes, we have, and thank you.
Also, I guess my question is, you know, what are you asking to be stopped or initiated at the property?
Well, first of all, you know, it is being monitored, you know, at this present time, it is being monitored. The lieutenant, as of this last summer, they had what's called a roll call. They had at 6 a.m., 2 p.m., and 10 p.m. where they came in. No, that's fine for that time being. And what I'm just asking is, why was it picked to be, you know, a residential area to put these individuals? I'd say I'm not against the sexual predators, by no means. What my concern is, like I say, it's a revolving door. Is there anything can be done on it?
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you, Larry, for coming. I did ask him to come and speak to the council, just because I think there's a number of individuals on the council that aren't aware of what's been going on, and I'm not 100% sure, but Larry, does it seem to be worse like once, like, you know, spring, kind of that spring-to-fall timeframe?
That is correct.
And my understanding, you know, having kind of watched like their conversations go through, is that, you know, he's correct. There's some that are there for a couple of days and some that go through, and it seems like there's times when some of the residents, the short-term residents that are there, you know, they just want to do what they need to do and move on with their lives. And then there seems to be other times where it just seems to be just a bad mix and where there's just problem after problem after problem. And there's a number of young kids in that neighborhood in those couple of blocks, and so, you know, I at least would like to start to have the discussion of, you know, is there another place within the city that still does what needs to be accomplished in making sure that, you know, if they, you know, when they've completed their time and they've served and transitioning back in, we, of course, want to make sure they have access to services, but, you know, is there something we can do? Not today, not tomorrow, but is there something that we can strategically look where they're still within the city limits, they have access to bus routes and things like that, but maybe perhaps just not right in a neighborhood that has young children? But, we have to start the discussion somewhere versus just kicking the can down the road. The difficult part that the city will always have is that we don't have all the control, but, you know, can we maybe bring the others to the table and have that discussion and see if they're willing to work with us? But, you know, where do we start? And so, that's, I guess, something that, you know, I would ask staff of how do we proceed so that the neighbors do feel like they're being heard.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you. To your point, the coming and going is because that is a transitional housing for sex offenders, and it is their first drop-off point, I guess you could say, when they get out of prison. We've had a workshop with probation parole of the police department several years ago. I agree. I think the way we, as a city, two things we can do. One is we can change the ordinance that would not allow that type of housing in that neighborhood would be one way, but I think that the key thing in what I'm hearing is that we need to look at maybe a better location that, as Councilmember Allison Osby said, you know, will give them what they need in services and bus transportation, whatever, so that they can, you know, go to their functions and their things, but maybe not in a central city neighborhood area. Would there be a different location? Now, the county, the county had kind of the same issue. They put a mobile home up in the city out by the Highway Department on County Y to house a Level 1 sex offender. I don't know that we want to go that route, but that's what the county did. But I do think that there are other locations, and I know we've had some concerns, especially in the Middle Village area, that they're always in that neighborhood, and they should be spread out a little more. And I think if we work with probation parole, work with the people that monitor these, and I think the state contracts that out, but I think we need to, again, have that conversation because we have a high level of sex offenders. Oshkosh Correctional is... Oshkosh Correctional is, is one of the major facilities that houses sex offenders. So that's why we get them in our community faster than maybe other communities.
And Deputy Mayor Herman is correct. We, we did as a neighborhood address this with some of the same folks that you did. It's been what, five years ago?
Yeah, about that.
Something along those lines. And it does seem that 54901 especially, there is somewhat of a concentration. As I understand it, the county is, you know, required to accept back those who were from the area at the time of the offense. So the state kind of, as I understand it, you know, dictates that to a certain degree. However, there are some neighborhoods that are maybe better equipped and, you know, it's one of those situations where everybody says, not in my backyard. So I agree that we should have that conversation continue, you know, for both safety and property value issues. But most certainly, you know, as individuals are re-entering, the community, you know, they, they do need a place to go. So it's just kind of a question of, you know, where do we feel like they can best be supported?
As I said, we have, we were given another handout from Oshkosh Police Department today about child offender, you know, 15-year-old that was handed out, you know, today. We've also had situations where three-year-olds were offended. Go, you know, why are they, that, that, that's something that should never be to begin with. But I think-
Thank you for bringing that-
Thank you for your time.
-attention and following up and persisting. So is this something that we want to consider having a workshop or-
We can put this back on the agenda. Typically, items that are brought up during citizen statements aren't acted on by council, but we can certainly bring it back at another time. I would point out that the residents that get notified, the residents get notified only of sexual offenders. That is not exclusively a facility for, for sexual offenders. But the residents don't get notified when it's somebody who was being released on theft or something like that. So I'm not trying to minimize your concern. Your concern's very legitimate. But we're, our role is land use regulation and certainly law enforcement. Law enforcement's aware and they've been monitoring it. But there is such a great turnover, which is why we get so many notices because when one person leaves, another, they fill it with, they pretty much keep the house full, which I think Mr. Luther is very aware of.
Yes, sir.
But it, the capacity-
Eight residents.
Yeah, it's eight residents. So, I mean, I've probably seen, you know, a dozen of those in the past few months because the short duration of their stays. But doesn't minimize the concern that's there. But they're heavily monitored, even though there's other ways of monitoring than just driving by. But I'll follow council's lead and I'll put on next agenda for, for council to discuss.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luther. Pam, do we have anyone else registered to speak for citizen statements?
No, we do not.
All right. Next, we have pending ordinances. The first one is ordinance 20-58. Approved zone change for urban mixed use. Okay, I'm sorry. You registered? All right, we have-
So-
Okay, yeah, we, sorry, our technology is-
Not now. Ask if they registered for a certain-
Did you register for a specific item or this? Okay. On the agenda? Okay, we're good. So the citizen statements that we just had is more for things that are not on the agenda, just to clarify, okay? But when that agenda item comes up, you'll get your opportunity. All right, perfect. So ordinance 20-58, approved zone change from urban mixed-use district to urban mixed-use district with a planned development overlay for properties located at the 700 block of South Main Street. Plan Commission approved. Do we have anyone registered to speak, Pam?
Not for this item.
All right, back to council for motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lyons, I do just have a question. There was, there was some discussion last week. A number of residents expressed curiosity about our use of the planned development overlay and that we, we do tend to have a significant number of these. Could you just kind of give a summary of why we're using that more and more?
Yeah, planned development helps, especially when it's a currently RDA-owned or city-owned parcel to make sure the quality of development is there that we'd like to see, that maybe go above and beyond what base code would require. A lot of times when the city owns it, we want to make sure that certain things are done when it's developed. In general, planned developments are kind of used as zoning through negotiation. If you have a, a difficult site that maybe has some constraints, that's called a meet base code, we can have a back and forth discussion with an applicant. Maybe they have a setback reduction, but they increase landscaping or increase building materials to account for that. So it provides a little bit more flexibility by still safeguarding the neighbors that makes sure it goes through a public process. The real benefit of a planned development as opposed to straight zoning is that it does require additional public input sessions.
Thank you very much. All right, any further discussion? All right, can we please take the roll?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Muggerower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Curried seven.
Next, we have ordinance 20-59, approved request to attach to the city from Town of Nikaimai Williams voluntary attachment, 3403 Oregon Street. Do we have anyone registered to speak on this item?
No, we do not.
All right, back to council for motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none, can we please take the roll?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Muggerower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Curried seven.
Next, we have a new ordinance. There will be no formal action this evening on this item. Ordinance 20-60, designate bike lanes on Snell Road from Jackson Street to Moser Street. Pedestrian bicycle advisory committee and traffic and parking advisory board recommend approval. Is anyone registered to speak on this item?
No one is registered.
All right. Thank you. And new resolution 20-61, approve specific implementation plan amendment for construction of a detail facility at 355 North Washburn Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Is there anyone registered to speak on this item?
No one is registered.
All right, back to council for motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All right, seeing none, can we please take the roll?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Muggerower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Curried seven.
Next, we have resolution 20-62, approve special class B license, operator licenses and taxi cab driver license. Is there anyone registered on this item?
No one is registered.
Back to council for motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, please take the roll.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Muggerower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Curried seven.
And our final new resolution this evening is 20-63, approve agreement in principle to provide free transit service for Oshkosh area school district students. And before we go to anyone who may be registered, if you are registered to speak or wish to speak on this item, we would ask you to kind of fill up a buffer line over here. Pam, do we have anyone registered?
Yes, we have quite a few individuals.
All right, so let's go ahead.
Okay, John Damel, 1923 Damel Street. And then the next one up is Hannah Dumke, 515 Madison Street.
Welcome.
Hi guys, how we doing? Well, thank you for listening to me. I really appreciate the opportunity to come up here and speak to you guys. Tonight, I want to talk a little bit about Oshkosh and how amazing this community is and how much support that this community really drives from through the Oshkosh Community Foundation, the Oshkosh Kids Foundation, Christian Anne Center, to the Day-by-Day Warming Shelter, the Heroes of Oshkosh. So many citizens here care and try to pick up the pieces and do the gaps. The neighborhood associations, it's, it's amazing. We really try to do a lot of the work for you. Tonight, we're, we're only asking you to consider to let these kids to get on the buses that are already running. I'm not asking you to buy a new bus. I'm not asking you to make a new route. I'm not asking you to hire a new bus driver. I just am asking you to allow these kids to hop on that bus and go to school. You know, we, the Oshkosh Kids Foundation, we spend $3,000 a month on bus passes. So it's kind of buffering a little bit. But I want to tell you a little bit about what that $3,000 a month can do for us. It's 60 nights in a hotel room. We currently have 10 homeless families sitting in a hotel right now that we shelter. And that's over 7,500 lunches that we could provide. These are things that we're not doing right now because we're spending $3,000 a month on bus passes. I understand there's a cost to it, but you're investing in your busing. You're investing in your transportation. So we really wanted to make sure the kids at school were taken care of. But we found out that we got to get the kids to school. And that's why I'm asking you to jump in here. I'm asking you to just go ahead and help us out and let the kids get on the bus that you already own, that you already drive, that you already pay a driver for. And the gas is already in the tank. We're not asking you to do anything special. We're just asking you to help us out because there's a lot of us out here that are helping the community and that we're doing the best because we want, we want to do our part to help you. Please consider doing this to help us out so we can focus our things and our money on things like shelter and food. Thank you.
Thank you. Hannah Dumke, followed by, who would be next, Pam?
The next is Lindsay Erickson.
Lindsay, okay.
Hannah, you got 30 seconds. Go quick.
Well, hello, I'm Hannah Dumke. I am a school social worker in the Oshkosh area school district, specifically Merrill Middle School, Merrill Elementary School in Oaklawn. Part of my job is attendance. So when a student misses five or has five unexcused absences, they're considered truant. If a student is beyond 10 minutes late, that is considered truant. So a quick story I have is a student who was habitually truant and part of that process is then having a meeting with the student and the parent. So this student had to walk two miles to school, had a parent who worked nights and didn't have a car. They said, "Transportation is our biggest barrier." So with help of the community, we got this kid a bus pass and he has not been late to school once since his bus pass. So what we're looking at is barriers of getting to school. So this semester, myself and fellow social workers are going to be collecting data with our truancy meeting to see what the, what some of the barriers are. However, through conversations, we know that transportation is one of those biggest barriers. So we ask that you consider this and look into this and help our students find success so they are able to get to school, so they are able to graduate high school, so they are able to be bigger, better community members. Thank you.
Hannah, could I just ask you a question? As a school social worker, how much of your day would you say is, or week, is spent either tracking down the passes or trying to figure out some of the transportation issues, either back and forth to school or jobs or extracurriculars? Can you give kind of a rough idea?
It really depends on the week. Attendance is one of those things. I could probably have a full-time job doing attendance, but with all the other needs at Merrill and Oaklawn, it's kind of hard to balance that. But I'd say there's quite a significant amount of time spent trying to help parents coordinate how they're going to get their kid to school. I think especially with this cold weather coming up, that's an additional barrier.
And then, so does the school receive like a certain amount of passes? And how, how quickly do you run out of those, would you say?
So some students receive passes if they are considered homeless or experiencing homelessness. That is a way for, part of the McKenney-Vento Act is schools helping with transportation so they can receive a bus pass that way. Otherwise, it's kind of that need-to-need basis. Sometimes the district will provide it. Other times, we have community members such as the Oshkosh Area Kids Foundation that is helping us provide those bus passes.
All right, thank you. Oh, Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Hannah, and I'm going to keep this specific to you because I'm sure you don't know the number, but how many kids do you think that, that fall under you? How many kids do you think that this would affect? I'm not looking for an exact number, just, just give us a ballpark.
Oh goodness. Not good with math. I would say maybe at least minimum 25%.
Okay.
I feel like a big part of this should be-
25% of how many? Just, just ballpark.
Like of my kid?
Yeah, 25, but I'm looking for a specific number, like 100, 25% of 100 of them or?
Sure.
Okay, all right.
I'd say a big part of this should be data though, because there's going to be those kids who have a ride to school or who parents are willing to give them a ride or that the bus takes longer than it does to walk, who won't utilize it. So I feel like it would be silly to spend money for all of Oshkosh area school district kids who may not need it. So I feel like collecting data on how much it is being utilized. And I think a big part also is that after-school programming too. Because I had a student this week who asked for a bus pass so they could get to the Y after school. So I think that's a big component as well.
Thank you. Lindsay Erickson, and she'll be followed by, do we have anyone else registered?
Joyce Frohn.
Joyce, Joyce, if you could go ahead and line up. Thank you, welcome.
So I'm a community health strategist at the Winnebago County Health Department. So thank you for considering this issue. Like Hannah mentioned, this is really about needing to collect more data to see how many students really would utilize the bus service. Personally, I also serve on the transit advisory board too. So in public health, we care about this issue because providing students access to public transportation is a public health strategy to make sure that we have a healthier community. So a major factor that we see that affect people's health is transportation and the ability to get to where they need to go in the community. So that might be after-school programs. It might be after-school job, appointments, school, other services that we have in the community like the Boys and Girls Club or the library. So by providing access to those activities, it might be extracurriculars, we're better connecting our students in our community. We're able to maybe help fill jobs in the community for students who are looking for some extra income. And we can also help relieve the burden of families trying to find the extra cash to be able to pay for bus passes where they could then maybe buy food or other, other things. So with easier transportation options, we're able to allow students access to other services in the community. We're able to keep our roadway safer, potentially lessening some congestion around school drop-off and pickup, pickup areas. And also, this is just a small piece of the larger, really complicated puzzle that we have with transportation access. So we have other services for populations in the community. So make the ride happen for older adults and people with disabilities and Winnebago Catch a Ride too. So this is a larger community issue, not just a school issue. It's to really help connect our, our kids and our community to other opportunities, other services in the city. So also, we're teaching kids how to be able to ride the bus so that potentially in the future, we could have a more reliable go-transit ridership too. So teaching students how to, how to ride the bus, be comfortable riding the bus. So thank you for considering this and supporting our kids in Oshkosh.
Thank you. Joyce? And if you could just state your name and your address as well.
Okay. My name's Joyce Frohn. My address is 425 Congress Avenue here in Oshkosh. My daughter went to Merrill. I was lucky, that's walking distance. It's not really walking distance to North High and I can't drive. My husband is on disability. If he's in the hospital, she has to take the bus. Sometimes I find out he's not going to be able to drive a couple hours before she has to get on the bus. I know from other parents, sometimes, I know from other parents who are maybe in poverty, they get free and reduced lunch. There's no such thing as free or reduced bus pass. They still pay $3 a day to get their kids on the bus. There's days I'm scraping quarters out, trying to find a couple of coins out of the sofa because I didn't have warning on a Monday, on a Sunday night that my husband wasn't going to be able to take her. wasn't going to be able to take her. I know other parents who, their kids have to walk when it's cold because they couldn't find the cash. All we're asking is, hey, kids get to eat lunch for free, how come they have to pay to go to school? That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
Susan Garcia Franz is up next, and then Eric Johnson.
So Eric, if you could line up behind Susan. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Susan Garcia Franz. I live at 1791 D Way in Fox Crossing, Nina, Wisconsin. And I'm here because I have had, been working for many, many years in transportation and transit and groups that are involved in the community to try to make things better. And it is a complicated issue, and I've been to trainings called tackling wicked problems. It's one of our wicked problems that we have in our community. And I come forth for testimony today because I also have teenagers. I have a daughter that's a senior, 17-year-old. And I do know that she has participated in sports. She was on the swim team this past year. And I do know that it took a lot of transportation to make that happen, to have her be able to participate in a sport. She's not the top athlete or anything like that, but it took a lot of effort. And I see kids that often drop off early in their educational experience because they just can't make it, they just can't get to those activities. And their access to opportunity and their access to potential and what they could be in your community and what they can add to your community is diminished due to transportation. And I understand that the bus routes end early in Ashkosh, and I understand we're trying to work on, I'm working with some groups right now that are trying to get some more access on issues, after-hour issue transportation. It's going to take a lot of work altogether. But as a parent and someone who has seen what access has allowed my daughter to have in terms of opportunity so that she can feel part of a greater whole is huge. And she has, we've had a lot of issues in high school, we have a lot of other issues, but her being able to participate in something and feel part of a bigger whole has been huge. So, I'm speaking for those kids that, it's really tough to be a teenager and stand up here and say, "Hey, it's really rough some days to have $3 to get to school." And sometimes we have safety issues, and sometimes we have, you know, access issues with being, living in the state of Wisconsin and our weather systems that we have, that children really do suffer on trying to get to school. And I think this is an opportunity for the city of Ashkosh to just make it a little bit easier for these kids to have access to opportunity and thrive in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all for having us here and letting us be heard tonight. We do appreciate it.
Can you just give us your name and address?
My name is Eric Johnson. I live at 1014 East Irving Avenue here in Ashkosh. The first speaker tonight asked you to, or pointed out that you don't have to invest in the transportation, you already have it there. This isn't an investment in transportation, this is an investment in the children. The kids that we have going to school, I'm sure all of us tell our kids, our cousins, our family members, "When I was your age," or any story like that, but we do know, kids know what's different with other kids. If one kid has reduced lunch, if one kid has to go to a different class for help, if one, every time it's something slightly different, kids see that and they know that, and it affects how they feel. They might not be treated worse by their peers, but they still can feel lesser. Something like this, to guarantee a ride to our children, so they don't have to sit there and scrape the other coins, they don't have to sit there and feel bad or come up with an excuse why they were late that day because they had to walk, it makes a big difference. It helps grades, it helps their self-confidence, and it helps them go forward in everything else they do. And with these bus passes, even though it's not the intent, some of these kids are old enough, they can have a part-time job, but you know they couldn't get to it before. Well, gosh, that bus pass is all day long. They can also get to a job and help themselves. It's not just a handout, it's a hand up. We need to support our kids, because that's all we can do. They are our future. We've heard the song, we've heard the references, we've joked about it, that next generation, but I believe in them, and I want to give them every chance we can. I really want to see this passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Deb Martin is next, and then we have Tracy Ogden.
Hi, Deb Martin, 164 Wildwood in Ashkosh. I've talked to you before about this, you know my passion for our kids. There's an African saying about, "How are the children?" So I've asked you before, I want you to think every day, "How are the children in Ashkosh? How are they?" We know 41% are on free or reduced lunch in our system. So we know things are tough for many. And as was mentioned, $2.50 a day free or reduced lunch versus $3 for a bus pass. So we know that those $3 matters. A friend of mine was, had children, she was a foster mom, sorry, word left my head. She said sometimes she'd get the, she'd have six children at a time in her home. She did this for 30 years in Ashkosh. Sometimes a kid will lose a monthly bus pass, it's $35. So you have to buy a second, sometimes even a third. When you have multiple children that need those passes, that's a lot of money. Foster moms don't make that much money. My bottom line is, it is an issue for kids. The stigma, the difficulty, even missing school once in a while is a hardship. Again, the buses are already running, there's already drivers, already gas in those buses. They may be a little crowded right around the time of school start and finish, but what a small price to pay to see children be able to get to school every day that they want to and not have the stigmatism of truancy or what. They have other issues. We always say, kids, suicide, hardship, mental illness, bullying. Let's make this one part of their day easier. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy Ogden?
Tracy Ogden, 802 Cavendish Road, Nina. I'm speaking on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club of Ashkosh. Your Boys and Girls Club turns 50 years old this year. We serve 1,700 kids. So when this is part of our discussion, transportation is a huge piece of our strategic plan, it's a part of our outlook, and it's a part of our goals for our kids. So when we talk about kids getting to school, that affects our kids after school. So if we can get our kids to the Boys and Girls Club after school as a part of this busing program, they can have dinner, they can get a shower, they can get clean clothes, they can have tutoring, they can get homework help, they can play basketball, they can be a part of something bigger to make their life a little bit more normal. Now, we understand that this costs money, and I just wanted to say that the Boys and Girls Club is looking forward to being a partner in that. You know, we spend about $7,000 to $8,000 a year on bus tokens to get our kids to the club and to get our kids home. So I'm not coming today to say, "Please just give us free busing." I'm coming today to say the Boys and Girls Club would really like to be a part of that discussion. I think that getting our kids around town is important, but I think it's a part of a bigger discussion to talk about bus routes, ours. I know it's much bigger than tonight, but we look forward to talking further about it.
And could I just ask, when we were doing the revisions and the updates to our transit development plan, was the Boys and Girls Club a stakeholder or part of those discussions about a year and a half, two years ago?
I believe they were. For us, the issue is a 6 o'clock ending time. So when we get our kids to the club, you know, it's great, we get them there by 4 o'clock, you know, they can get their homework help, they can get them dinner, but then you're shooing them right on the bus to get them out the door, to get them home. And that's where we run into the problem. So just when you're getting into the programming at night and, you know, the other things happening, we've got to get them out the door.
And so, you spend about $7,000 to $8,000 for just tokens?
Just tokens.
But do I also understand that you additionally have like a vehicle, that you do some shuttling?
We have three vans and a bus that also pick up kids after school.
So, any rough idea estimate what that costs?
You know, it's about the same. It's not the problem of getting another bus, it's the problem with finding drivers. That's really where we run into the problem, is finding people with their CDL that are able to take kids. The other issue that we have is obviously the liability of taking kids home at night. You know, if we can get the kids on the bus route. This also solves for the Boys and Girls Club about half of our issue. So it solves the issue for the tweens and the teens and, you know, the older kids of getting around town. For us, it doesn't solve the issue of a seven-year-old. I can't put a seven-year-old on a city bus, but the older kids we can.
So the true cost is more like $14,000 to $16,000?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, thanks.
The Boys and Girls Club is committed to that. You know, about 80% of our population is free and reduced, so it's a big deal for our kids.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Tracy, out of that $7,000 to $8,000 in tokens, bus passes, however you want to put it, how many kids are, just, how many kids does that service? I'm trying to get around a number here. And don't, I'm not looking for a specific.
Sure. You know, the problem we run into is, you're not only just giving a bus token to a kid, that kid is giving it to their parents, that kid is giving it to their grandparents, the kid, you know, that kid's giving it to their aunts and uncles. So, off the top of my head, I can't give you a number. I could email you a number tomorrow when I went back and looked, but off the top of my head, I don't know.
So this, as it says today, isn't going to solve very much of your problem?
It would solve a portion of our problem. And, you know, overall, getting the kids to school is absolutely, it's an important thing, you know, and we want the kids to succeed all day long.
If you had to guess as far as a percentage, what percentage would this solve for you guys?
About 40%, 30%, I'd say.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Pam, do we have anyone else registered?
Yes, we have two more. Sister Mary Jo Solinsky, and then Bill Van Lopkin.
Thank you. Sister Mary Jo Solinsky. My address is 2280 Patriot Lane, Unit D, as in David, here in Ashkosh. Statistics for poverty here in Ashkosh are very high. It is known that one way to get out of poverty is education. Getting an education entails getting to school. Students who do not have the means to get to school without asking for rides or requesting bus passes can feel less worthy than those students who do not have this stigma. Freeing students of this concern by providing free busing is one way of raising their self-concept and helping them to realize that they are worth it. It also helps provide a consistent educational experience and a possible means to help them rise out of poverty. Thank you for listening and for giving all of us a chance to speak.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Bill Van Hookel, is that right?
Close. Bill Van Lopkin. So, thank you for having, allowing me to speak. And I represent an organization called, my address is 2518 West Sunnyview Circle. I actually live in Grand Shoot. But I represent an organization called Esther, and I'm an organizer here in Ashkosh. And I can say, there's been a group of people from Ashkosh for the past five years that have been meeting every single month at Benai Israel Synagogue on this issue. Tonight is a culmination of lots of hours of talking, of strategizing. They've gone to every single school in the district to talk about this with school social workers, or the middle schools and high schools. They've stowed out at the bus stops. Last week, we're at the Transit Center, talking to students as they're getting off the bus about this issue. And for a child, for a kid, everyone said, "We are so happy you're doing this. We are so happy you're doing this, and we need this so bad." One other issue, you talk about statistics, the need for statistics. Now, we don't have any statistics right now, but across my desk last week came a statistic from the same kind of issue on the East Coast, on Montgomery County, just outside Washington DC. They started free busing for students under the age of 18 six months ago. Since that time, they've increased their ridership by 57%, by 57%. I just want to read a couple quotes from some of the commissioners that I think, hopefully, you all have the same kind of feeling about this. One of the quotes says, "We realized that this was injustice. This was inequity, and we were restricting students to a specific window for seemingly arbitrary reasons." Another one said, "When we expand access and opportunity to transit, people are going to take it." So when we talk about, well, who might take it now, I think we have to think, there's going to be a lot more people in the future taking it as this is more accessible. And one other quote, the commissioners there in Montgomery County said, "Ultimately, they hope that when kids ride free will lead to students becoming public transit riders early and perhaps one day turn into fare-paying adults." Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? Yes, please. Could you give your name to the officer here if you haven't already registered? And then, yes, just join us up here as you get an opportunity. Name an address, please.
My name is Elizabeth Thronhanks, and I'm 16 years old. 425 Congress Avenue.
And what's your address, hon?
425 Congress Avenue.
Thank you so much. Welcome.
I am one who often rides the bus. I have to get to school if my dad is in the hospital or is working. I have to take the bus. There's no other option unless I walk and I'm an hour late. I found that out a few weeks ago when I slipped on the ice and I lost, I tried to pick up all my money, but it was in the snowbank, I couldn't find it. So I had to walk to school, there was no other option, and I was an hour late to school. I missed one and a half periods. I had to go, and they're like, "Oh, why are you so late, Elizabeth? You know, you're an hour late." Like, sometimes they're like five minutes late, sometimes they're 10 minutes late. This is abnormal for you. It's like, I had to walk. There's been times when I've been texting my dad's lunch, and my dad texts me and said, "I'm so sorry, Elizabeth, I'm in the hospital. I have pneumonia, I had a stroke, I had something go on, and you need to find a way to get home from school, and I'm sorry." And sometimes I don't have, sometimes it's a good situation where I have like maybe $5 or $10, and I go to the bank and get change, and it's not much of a problem. But sometimes I don't have that money. So then I go to there, and if they have tokens, which they usually don't, they run out of passes and tokens days into the month. If it's the 10th, I don't even try going there, they don't have them. I will go to teachers, you know, people I barely know. Like, can I have $1.50 just to get home? I have to walk home and I'll miss things. I also can have a job. I was offered a job, but I did decline. I very rarely have a way to get there unless I know for a fact I'll always have $4.50, probably more like $5 or $6 because I have to come back again. A lot of kids have this issue. The buses, when I come back, if I'm on the bus, it'll usually be one full number two bus, one full number four bus, and then half filled of each.
Thank you. Is there anything else you'd like?
I got it.
Yep. Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your first name.
Elizabeth.
Elizabeth. Regardless of what happens here tonight, we're going to make sure you get a bus pass for the rest of the year, okay? So, if somebody could get, Matt, if you want to get her name and address, we're going to make sure you get a bus pass for the rest of the year. So, thank you for coming up here.
I would like to make sure that all of my friends who are not able to come because they ride the bus also get bus passes.
Nice can of worms opened up there, Mark.
There you go.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right, it looks like we had a chance to hear from everyone who's here to speak on the item. So, back to council for a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor Herman.
Before we get into discussion, I guess, I think, I guess I'm going to register complaint. I think Mr. Peschall should be recusing himself from the conversation tonight. If we vote this through, it's a budget item, and it will have a fiscal impact. At the same time, he'll be doing the same thing when he votes for the school board. Fiscal impact, I think that serving on two boards on an issue that has financial impact to both government entities is a conflict of interest. And I believe he should be recusing himself. I don't know if any other council members feel the same way as I do, but I think it is definitely a conflict of interest that he participates in a discussion, even though he did and was one of the members to bring the resolution forward. Thank you, Mayor.
So I would say, although to Mr. Herman's point, there's nothing illegal about it, it's rather Mr. Peschall feels that it's ethical to serve and comment on both sides of the boards when, you know, there is a potential budget benefit for one and not the other. But I understand your point, and some, I do agree with it, but at the end of the day, I think Mr. Peschall has to make that decision for himself. I think Mr. Peschall has to make that decision for himself.
Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I guess where I sit on this issue is we've been kicking this can down the road. I, I think Bob is entitled to, to his vote tonight. I, I, I don't think there's a big enough conflict for us to overshadow the, the big picture here. I'm here for the, for the kids. I'm not here to bust Bob's chops, and I'm not here to subsidize the, the school district or the townships, but I, I think we should move this forward and have this discussion tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Crowsey?
Thank you. I'm going to agree with Mr. Miller. Councilmember Peschall has no financial gain out of this. This is a larger issue than any of us. I think we can just allow him to vote, and that's my opinion on what he should do, but he's entitled to his own choice.
I'm perfectly comfortable with Mr. Peschall participating in the vote. I think that, you know, we go back now almost two years of having these conversations, and I did participate on the task force initially, and there were a number of meetings then. And, you know, it's taken quite some time to, to get to this point. And, yeah, I, I support Councilmember Peschall taking part in the vote. So, that was that piece. Do we want to have further discussion on the actual resolution now? All right?
I just voiced my opinion.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. All right. So council, discussion on the matter. Councilmember Crowsey?
First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming for this very important issue that we've been discussing for far too long. I think in the grand scheme of things, this is a very small amount of money. It's a reason for people to move to Oshkosh. It's a reason for, one of the reasons why I ran for council, for inclusive, an inclusive community. And I think we can be proud of this, to offer this to kids that aren't all at the same playing field. I think we got to understand where certain kids and families come from compared to more privileged families that don't even consider this a, a problem or a conflict in their life. I mean, the biggest thing we can do is put ourselves in somebody else's shoes and really feel how they feel every day. A lot of kids could benefit from this, getting jobs at night to help out their families. Maybe their parents can't work, like we've heard. It's just too big of an issue to let pass by, and I'll be supporting this item.
Thank you. Councilmember Allison Osby?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'm not exactly sure where, where to begin on this. So like, one, one of the things that like, Mr. Crowsey brought up, which was also other comments that were made, is, you know, this is a way to get kids to jobs and back home at night. Well, the service only runs to 6:00 PM. If kids don't get done with school or after-school activities till 4:00, they need to find an employer then that's going to hire them between, up until the hour of 6:00 PM. So, you know, that's something long-term, if we're going to be looking down the road, you know, that will certainly be a factor, hours of service. You know, the, the other thing, you know, that, and, and this is hard to say, it's, this is one of the hardest things I have to say. I absolutely hear everything that everyone is saying, and I don't disagree at all. The challenge that I have is the school district, Vicky Cartwright and her board are responsible for one demographic in this town, and that is to educate the students, that is to provide them the opportunity for busing to get to the school. I was elected by the people to serve all of the people, and how do I pick? How do I pick one demographic, which is students that I have a big heart for, over our seniors? I have more seniors and disabled and handicapped in poverty that I can't offer them free busing. I don't know how this council can actually say to themselves, "I'm going to pick one, one group of individuals to serve and ignore the rest." And we cannot provide free busing for everybody. A lot of what most people don't understand is we subsidize the transit system right now to the tune of $800,000. When I was first elected back in 2011, I want to say it was maybe more like 200, 300,000? To be honest, I don't remember for sure, but we've never, it's never stabilized, and we've never seen more money. It's always decreased. So, and we don't control state and fed, we don't even know those numbers of what we're getting even till the end of the year to even try to project or to even try to figure out cost. And to a, a couple individuals' points, you're correct. We, we've got the buses, we're putting the gas in, it's already there. You know, it seems like it makes sense to just, you know, put them on, but to my point is, you're right, we made the investment in the gas. We pay for the drivers. We, we, we pay for the equipment, we pay for the repairs. And I went back and I watched again, I watched it the first time and I watched it again today. December 4th, this was on the school district's agenda. There was not one person that showed up for that meeting to talk to the school district about the need and the want for the community. I find that frustrating. I get it that we have the equipment, but there's also other large community needs as well, special assessments, again, poverty, and it's across all, all, all gaps. We have neighborhoods that, you know, right now have, you know, sex offenders and others that we have to also look at. If there's a potential down the road, if we can get other people to the table and we can relocate them, that's going to require money. So, I'm not against free transportation for the kids, but where is the role of the school district and the administrator? Three communities in the state provide free busing, and there's nothing free about it. Somebody is paying that bill in all three communities, which is Appleton, Green Bay, and Sheboygan. The school districts cover 100% of that cost to do that. Not, not the city, it's the school district. My guess is, out of this council, I'd be curious to know who other than myself and our staff contacted the other three communities to ask them why the district was covering the cost 100% versus the cities? And there's a lot, I mean, I could go on for probably an hour, some of those reasons. One of the things that Appleton experienced was, you know, we have an economy that's been on an uptick for the last decade, more than a decade. But we also know in 2000, approximately 2022, 2023, 2024, we're going to see a significant downturn. And what happened to Appleton is then they had competing, because when the economy goes down, ridership increases. So who do you put on the bus? Do you put on the kid or the student that needs to get to, to school? Or do you put on the parents that need to get to their job? And so, that, there's, there's a whole host of examples like that, and when the economy is good, then ten, then ridership tends to drop again. And like I said, you know, so Green Bay has some of the same challenges, Sheboygan certainly has a lot of challenges. So, you know, that's my question, is, you know, we just had our strategic plan, and Mr. Peschall did raise his hands and did sit, or did raise his hand and say, "I want to talk about transportation." But we went through an entire day, eight hours of strategic planning, and busing didn't make it to the top of any one of the categories of our strategic plan. The school district and the administrator, I am not seeing this as a priority for them either. If it was a priority, they would take care of it. They would do the job, and they would take care of it. So, I don't believe that the city of Oshkosh should be picking and choosing what, which group is most deserving in poverty to get buses. I feel Ms. Cartwright and her board need to address the student issues that they have going on. Because this is, this is an important issue, and because I do have a huge heart for kids, you know, I will be making an amendment, because what I would like to see us do is I would like to see us support the school district for one year. So basically, a modification of this for one year. Let them collect the data, let them try to get this in, because their budget cycle is different than ours. Their budget cycle, I believe, goes July 1st to June 30th, and they could spend now this spring to budget, and then tax for it appropriately. Because I'm hearing two different things. I'm hearing attendance from some is the reason, and others, I'm hearing it's for all other issues and not attendance. So if you watch that school board meeting from August 4th, they're on two different pages. This council has been on two different pages, and the community who has spoke is sending two different messages as well. So I think part of the reason why we haven't come to something is nobody's speaking with one voice. And as a policymaker, that's extremely confusing. So, I will, you know, I certainly encourage the council, you know, to, to, you know, have input and also, you know, be a part of this discussion, you know, but certainly if the council, you know, would, would be willing, I, I would like to make an amendment. And I do think data is crucial, and I have been hearing a lot of things that, you know, for those that are in the actual district that are actually trying to track it, it isn't necessarily citywide. It seems to be kind of in a geographical area. And what other things? Is there grants out there? Ms. Paul Mary and I were talking about, there's some, some different things, you know, and has the school district look at that. But again, do they have other fish to fry? December 3rd, we had an officer that was stabbed, and it was a mental health issue. I don't know where Mike is at in his recovery, but I would bet you it's long and complicated. So I can tell you, for anybody on December 3rd, what was the number one priority in this community? It was safety and mental health. So, again, I'll, I'll, I'll stop with that, but that's where, that's where I'm at right now. And like I said, I encourage everybody to participate in the conversation that's on council.
Yeah, we do, we do have a couple more council members that would like to weigh in on this, and I appreciate the comments. So Deputy Mayor Herman, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. I just got some questions of, of staff at this point. Mr. Collins, you, you meet pretty regularly with the members of the staff of the school district, correct? Did any of them, I, I can't think of the, I think the finance director for the school district handles the busing?
Yeah, she does.
Okay. Did she, did she ever ask the city for money for busing, for students that, that need that assistance?
No, she hasn't.
Okay. And going back to Councilmember Allison Osby, I, I support the kids. I always have, always did, as the sheriff's deputy and crowd prevention committee programs, the kids are most important, so I, I support that. It's the data. We don't have any data, that's part of it. But another question, concern I have is the prokial students. They're not going to be able to ride the bus, correct? It's only going to be the Oshkosh Public Schools?
I guess that's up for the conversation.
Because my question is, how are you going to determine if it's a student from, say, Trinity Lutheran or Grace Lutheran, if we're going to let all kids on the bus? There's no way we're going to be able to say, is the bus driver going to ID these kids? I mean...
The resolution states the school district, so those students would be, they wouldn't get free busing. They would present identifications. That's, as Mr. Collins and I have discussed, if this were to pass, how would we do it? Middle school and high school students have IDs. We would use that as the, as a way to determine if they were able to get on the bus for free.
Okay. That being said, I thought this includes K through 12, right? And they don't have IDs, right? The elementary students don't have any IDs?
That presents a different problem, and I think Jim has checked with some of the other bus services that do that, and Jim, why don't you explain what you...
Oh, yeah. So the other ones, they, the 6 through 12, they use their IDs, and the K through 6, they just, they don't, they just let them on, basically. But, so I've checked with the Sheboygan and Green Bay, which, you know, they, they have the programs that are funded by the school district, and that's how they handle that currently.
Okay. So, did, did the, did that question get brought up about prokial students? How do they deal with that in those districts?
I haven't asked them.
Okay. The other question are, and again, this is not derailing the whole process, it's questions that I think need to be answered, is what about students who live in the townships? They are at, say, South Park or Merrill or wherever they, you know, they want to go to the Y Boys and Girls Club. How do we make sure that, do they pay, or do they get free busing too?
This is Oshkosh area school district, so non-residents would be eligible for this service.
Okay. So we get no money, no extra revenue from Black Wolf, Nakaimai, AlGomar, or the town of Oshkosh, correct?
That would be correct.
Okay. Mr. Collins, it says in the memo that, that it would be paid for from transit fund reserves. Where did that come from? Because we had a 3.57% increase in the levy. Where, we have reserves?
The transit fund has some cash reserves, and we would need to dip into those reserves.
Basically, the main, the main reason for that is the fuel's been lower than we budgeted for the last year or two, so that's, that's the main reason why we would have a little bit of reserve. However, generally, it's good practice to keep a little bit of money in reserve. For instance, if, once we set our budget, we can adjust it, so I think like Ms. Allison Osby alluded to before, we generally, so I, I have to submit our budget, as you know, and council approves it towards the end of the year. However, we don't know what our state and federal funding is until like March or April of this year. We'll know what it is for this year. So if fuel spiked for some reason this year, we can't go back and ask for more money. We only, we get what we budgeted back in November, no, regardless of what happens this summer. And the same thing, like if there was some, a capital grant would come up for a bus and we didn't budget for it, we could then apply for it, and that, we would use that reserves towards that. So that's the reason, most transit systems do have a little bit of reserve just for situations like that. This would be a little bit unique. I've never heard of any transit system doing this before, but that's why we would have a reserve.
This would not be sustainable for a three, for a two or three-year period, if we could do it, but long-term, we wouldn't have the financial wherewithal.
All right. I'm going to move on to the next council member, and before the one following that, I think a couple of us haven't had a chance to weigh in, so before someone goes a second time. So, Councilmember Miller, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Deb, thank you for your comments. It's something I didn't think about, about the other groups and how we're choosing one group over another. If we approve this tonight, there's going to be another group sitting here, and then our numbers are going to change, and that, that's our problem. That's what you hired us for. But I want you to understand, this is a very complicated issue. It's not just saying free busing. We all know nothing is free. I don't believe in free. To that end, I also do not want this to become a divisive issue. I'm here for the kids just as much as anybody. I think all of us up here are for the kids. There's, there's not one person up here that isn't 100% for the kids. I, I can attest to that. I guess to follow up on Deb's thing in the, in the convenience of time here, I guess where my thoughts are, I, I can't support this as it is. It's too open-ended. It's, 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 it's too constraining. But what I could support is a two-year, I don't, I don't think one year is enough time to catch the data, but what I could support is a two-year negotiated contract. Let the experts negotiate it. I don't think we should be up here dictating these terms, but what I could, what I could do is, is support a two-year trial period, but with a negotiated contract like, like Deb said, Appleton, Green Bay, Sheboygan, these are the ones that are providing this busing. They're the experts. So if we, if we would do something identical to that, I could support a two-year negotiated contract. So that's, that's the extent of it, so.
All right. I'd like to weigh in. I, I've had mixed feelings on this. I, I've worked on it. I've heard a lot of each side, and, and it shouldn't be divisive because it is an investment in our community. You know, we, the school district does have this, what's called the city option. The state statutes allow the school district to choose. What they do require them to do is provide transportation... What they do require them to do is provide transportation to something in what's called the UHT, the unusually hazardous transportation, and they'll receive some transportation aid back on that, from what I understand from DPI. Um, I think that's only about 1,000 students. Why do we have a total of maybe five, 10,000? Um, on the other side, on the other side of this, um, the, the cost could increase. You know, there was, there was a success on the East Coast that was mentioned by someone who spoke earlier, an increase in ridership of 57%. So we want to see an increase in ridership. We want to develop future fare-paying riders. So how, how we're addressing this right now is really difficult because we're looking at paying, um, or dividing this up, and there's been a generous, uh, community group that has offered to, um, help fund a third of this along the way. Um, the other piece of this that's a little frustrating is that, uh, you know, the folks that do live in the townships, you know, no offense or anything, but they do benefit greatly from other subsidies, um, that the city taxpayers are paying for. Uh, and the school district has to provide them that are two years, or, I'm sorry, two miles or more outside. And, and so they're, they're getting a benefit where most of our 40% free and reduced lunch students are living in the central city. Um, so, you know, we subsidize a lot of things in this city. I don't think this would be a bad thing for us to invest in, but there are potential costs beyond, you know, sustainability, as, as City Manager was referencing. Um, Councilmember Deb Alison Osby mentioned the strategic planning session and, and the all-day event that we worked on. While busing specifically wasn't addressed, economic development was number one on everybody's list. And when we talk about economic development, we talk about not just attracting, but retaining people here in the city, and, and we need young people filling, uh, some of these service sector jobs that, that are going unmet. You know, maybe some of those not, not maybe, it's likely that some of those non-driving students could do that. Now, what they do in terms of rides home after 6:00 PM, I'm not sure, but we have a neighborhood group that spoke earlier and presented earlier where we've invested $100,000 a year over the last several years, and the return on that investment is right around that. But they've also built social connections. You know, I'm, I'm wondering if those 18 neighborhood associations have a couple of carpoolers in there too for some of those later hours. But in any event, um, I, I struggle with some of the wording that's in the resolution, and, and one of the things that says that the, that it's unreasonable to expect our school district to provide this transportation free to the students. I don't necessarily agree with that element, but I, I will be supporting the investment in our kids, the investment in increased ridership, and I understand it's going to have some financial impacts that, but I believe that we're going to see a return on that investment. And so I will be supporting it as it's presented. Uh, I think we'll have to do a little more work come that third year, uh, to look at how it's sustained beyond that. And I believe Oshkosh is such a pioneering and stubborn community that I think that we will persist and we will come up with a way to continue that. Councilmember Alison Osby.
Thank you. Um, it was just going back to Mr. Collins' comment about reserves. Going into reserves, you save for a rea, a reason, and I don't, I mean, other than perhaps for a year, you know, if that's where we would need to pull the resources from for, for our share, I'd certainly be open to that. But, you know, just to give an example, you know, um, a few years back when gas prices increased so significantly, they were in the high $3 range. Um, you know, that, that was a significant impact to the budget. That was just one item, and it was well, well over $100,000 beyond what our budget was. Um, I think Mr. Roloff had told me that approximately we spent about a quarter of a million dollars a year, you know, for fuel for the buses. But, you know, in a year that it spikes, um, I, I want to say it went up to about 340,000?
Yeah.
About 340,000. So I mean, that, that's why you have reserves and also too, just unforeseen things. So, you know, to, to say that we're going to dip into our savings for this, um, for transportation, I, I think is unreasonable. And again, Ms. Paul Mary, I get your point, you know, but I don't see us at this point with already subsidizing $800,000 a year, um, how we're going to be able to increase, um, you know, our rider, or, um, you know, our, our hours of service strategically, perhaps. And you're right, economic development, but most of those things that we were talking about in regards to economic development was, um, you know, what, what is the cause of poverty in this community, um, for the parents? Because we do things and we do provide things which are helpful to our kids, like making sure that they have, you know, snacks to take home, or breakfast, or lunch, or clothing, or things like that. But that's essentially, we're band-aiding a symptom, but what is the actual root cause? You know, is it, is it barriers to employment because of lack of education or skill? Is it mental health, addiction issues? Is it, um, you know, there's something on the record? You know, what is it? Because the only way we're really going to ever tackle true poverty and to really tackle getting kids to school at any level is to be looking at what's the root of the issue, and we as a community, um, as a whole, haven't quite figured that out yet.
Councilmember Peschall.
So much to process. So, um, first, I, I want to acknowledge, um, Councilmember Alison Osby, because I, I do appreciate the view that you bring to the table. I, I do appreciate it. We may not be on the same side on this one, but I really want to acknowledge that I appreciate your, your mindset on this. So, um, uh, Mr. Herman as well. So, uh, I, I do appreciate, um, I want to call them dissenting views, because I don't, we don't disagree, and we don't, we don't agree on this one. But I believe that, um, providing this opportunity for us to talk openly and publicly about this is one of the standalone traditional ways of how we create change in our community. Um, you know, so dissent is, is how things change. Um, and so I feel that your opinions and your insight are extremely important to how we move forward with creating this. I'm not going to sit here and say that this is a perfect proposal, because it's not. But what I do want to sit here and say is that it's time for us to step forward with this proposal and to provide the direction on staff on both sides of the governmental bodies on how to proceed in, in creating this very unique proposal in our community. So, um, so I, I value your opinions, and I, and I know staff will value your opinions as well in, in creation this. So what we, what we go over today is, is just a stepping stone. It's creating an opportunity, um, specifically for a certain group of people that reside in our community and people that use our community. Um, and I, and I think that's important to acknowledge, that we're creating tools and resources of self-sufficiency. Um, and, and that's one of the things that we do with, with, with what the taxpayers allowed us to do. So, um, I, I feel it's really important. I, Mr. Councilmember McGurhaur and I, uh, kind of came back to talking about where do we move forward from this, and, and I was really comfortable moving forward with having this presentate, this, how, this proposal brought back to the council and in, uh, community settings so that the public could talk about it and so that we could talk about it in the open. And I think that's really important. I think that's what we're, what we're accomplishing today. Um, so I believe that the proposal in this form, uh, provides a good foundation. Um, I believe it allows for us to be flexible in creating that program. Um, I believe it provides the right direction that we, some of us on both ends have been working towards for two years to create. So, um, so, but in the end, I, I, I think this, this is, this is one step towards helping one group of people, young people, grow up in our community using our resources and building themselves up, and then supporting families that are having struggling times, um, to be able to move forward. We're creating resources here, um, with our next generation. Um, I don't have the data to support this, but I know it's very, very true, is that, um, the, uh, the use of vehicles, the use of alternative transportation, uh, sorry, the use of alternative transportation is going to rise, uh, with the next coming generations of, of people that are going to grow in our community. Um, and I believe that, that part of why I was so much behind doing this is because it shapes our future of, of transportation use of, for our kids. Not just our kids, but how our communities, uh, is shaped, planned strategically. It's just, it's a, it's a progressive thinking, it's a progressive step forward in providing this opportunity. So, um, I've spent a lot of time working with the community entities that are going to support this program in whichever form that we, uh, give direction for them today. So they are happy to be part of creating and helping fund, uh, this, this proposal for whatever it becomes. They're waiting on us, all of us, not just this council, but also the school, the school board and the school district as well, to say, "We're in." Um, and that's what tonight is about. It's about saying, "We're in," and that we're in for kids and that we're moving forward on this proposal. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McGurhaur.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, you know, honestly, I really hadn't planned on staying too much about this topic this evening. Um, my fellow councilmembers know, uh, you know how I feel about this one and know, um, you know, my thoughts on this one. As the architect of this, roughly this, this proposal, um, I understand it's not perfect. Never was, uh, never was looking to achieve perfection, uh, and that's unattainable. But it's an option, and it's something that we can do to have an impact, uh, on students and on members of this community. Um, I guess let me take a quick step back though, too. I just want to acknowledge that, you know, all the councilmember statements this evening so far, I don't know that I can disagree with many of them, honestly. They're valid points, thoughtful, and, um, each of them know that I respect their opinion and, and they're taking this issue. And it's not an easy issue, as has been pointed out, uh, several times. So it's not easy. It, it sounds simple, it's not. But I respect that they're giving it their due diligence, that they're doing their work that they were put up here to do. So I respect that, and I just want those in the community to know that, uh, it's important to me that, you know, uh, you know, they're not against kids. That's not the message that should come out of this, no matter how they vote or their comments tonight, they're not against kids. The young lady, Elizabeth, uh, had a good story or a good, it's not, it's not a story, a good, um, message to share. And I had another one, actually, council got an email, I believe it was last evening late, and I was going to read it, but it drives home her same point. Um, and by the way, she, you, you did fantastic stepping up in front of us. Thank you for, thank you for coming up and, and speaking tonight, uh, tonight to us. So Cheyenne Grunow, who happens to be a UWO student here in Oshkosh, uh, sent an email to, to staff, uh, excuse me, to, to council, and this is in, this is a, a public record, so I have no problem, uh, reading this. I did not let her know ahead of time, but, uh, here we go. So she works at the Center for Community Development Engagement and Training at UWO, and she's a peer mentor in the truancy intervention program. And as a peer mentor, uh, we met with, I'm reading quote, uh, word for word here from her email, "We met with students in the Oshkosh Area School District to improve attendance. A student I work with takes the bus to and from school every day. Since his family cannot afford a bus pass, he relies on the, uh, the school's social worker to provide one for him. In early January, his bus pass expired, and he was unable to arrive to school on time for three days as his family had to drive him to school. Since he was already lacking attendance, this resulted in additional missed class periods and homework. Um, and even though this exact situation is unusual, uh, every student in the Oshkosh Area School District should have the option to arrive to school in a safe and timely manner, regardless of their family's socioeconomic status." Uh, I don't know that I can say it any better than she said it. And I think I'm just going to leave it at that.
Thank you. Councilmember Crossy.
Um, I just wanted to say, everybody's made amazing points for and against, and I think as, um, Mr. McGurhaur said, nobody up here is saying that people that would vote against this would be against kids, because I think we all care and consider the kids the most important people of Oshkosh. Uh, I just got a couple of points that I thought up along the way. I think from the people I've spoken to and what I've heard tonight and what I haven't heard from people, the majority of Oshkosh wants this. And as elected officials, our job is to voice the opinion of the majority. And nationally, that's what peop, elected officials are criticized for, for not following along with what the majority believes. Um, statistics may not tell the whole story, but the, the stories that might have fallen through the cracks, the ones that aren't told are the, are the ones that really matter. Children's versus seniors, I can totally understand why seniors, disabled especially, would need busing as well. They may not be able to afford it. But when they were children, they didn't have the obstacles that children today have. Their schools were very close to their neighborhoods, because it was neighborhood schools back then. And I would hope councils of, of the past would have thought of this if they had the same disadvantages as childrens do today. Um, the private school conversation, I believe kids that go to private schools are probably better off than kids that go to public schools. And I would think if we do pass this, maybe some of the community groups that have supported some kids in public schools can support those kids at private schools that couldn't afford it. And finally, other schools do pay, other cities do pay more and do pay for the busing. And that's really frustrating that we can't come up with that arrangement in Oshkosh, but at the end of the day, does it really matter? Can we be the first city to, to pass this? And maybe other cities will follow Oshkosh. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to make a amendment to Resolution 20-63, uh, to basically address Councilmember Miller's, um, request in a sense that, uh, under Article 1, change the city of Oshkosh and Oshkosh Area School District agreed to a two-year commitment, uh, to public transportation for the school years of 2021, 21, and 22. Drop 22 to 23. Keep everything else in that paragraph. Go to paragraph, uh, it would be paragraph 3, I believe, uh, for 20, uh, be the second sentence, for 2021 through 2022, the city's partial budget for through transit fund services. And in Article 4 of the resolution, second, uh, paragraph, or second sentence, excuse me, be limited to initial two-year term of the program. And on the next sentence, again, it would be a two-year period that the program should be fully funded by the Oshkosh Area School District and the city of Oshkosh, sir, long So that would be my amendment to Resolution 20-63.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion on the amendment. Councilmember Alison Osby, I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. So here's a, here's a couple of things, and this is why, this is why I suggested a year. Because to Mr. Peschall's point, it's been two years and it's gone nowhere. And to Mr. McGurhaur's point, it's gone nowhere. My idea for a year was that it would give a sense of urgency, um, because again, the school district did not come up with a resolution. It's the city council that's stepping up to the plate then to address this issue, to try to figure something out. My fear is if we let it go two years, this is going to sit by the wayside, knowing that there's a referendum potentially that's coming up, um, a school consolidation, there's a whole, whole host of issues, and I'm worried that we're going to get two years from now, and we're going to be really no different other than, and no solution, no long-term solution. So, you know, I would ask, would Mr. Herman and would Mr. Miller be willing to do one year, um, to put a sense of urgency on this? And then my only thing would be is because how I... And then my only thing would be is because how I read in Part IV is that should the, should parties or whatever determine that the program after this initial X-year period, that the program would be fully funded by Oshkosh area school district and the City of Oshkosh. I would hope that if we would provide assistance and support to the school district one year, I prefer to see it one year, two years, that after that, they take the responsibility and they move forward for a long-term viable program. I do not believe that the City of Oshkosh should continue, because we don't know what we don't know, and we will always be responsible for everything regarding the vehicles, the drivers, the salaries, the benefits, the gas, and to commit to that beyond a short period of time. I mean, again, I want to support a partner in the community, so when it comes to the amendment, would you guys be willing to entertain one year for a sense of urgency?
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor.
And then we can have further discussion on the amendment, because it sounds like we have an amendment to the amendment.
Sorry. I guess my question is, I understand the urgency, but I would like the people to feel that they've got two years of material. My big thing is as long as this is negotiated by staff, not us up here, because we're missing some stuff in this thing. And if we can all agree that this is a negotiated contract for limited dollar amounts, limited liability on behalf of the city, I could go one or two years. So.
All right. I'd like to weigh in a little bit here. I appreciate the foresight of thinking of three years, but I also appreciate Councilmember Allison Osby's emphasis on putting some urgency, because we have been working on this for over a year, and yet, the one thing that's happening this year with the census, we won't have those new numbers until 2021, and I feel like one year isn't enough to really gauge and collect good data and to allow those affected groups and entities to plan for the sustainability. And so I think I would feel better about three years, but I would be okay with, I would be okay with supporting two. I'm not comfortable cutting it off at one, because I think that's not enough time to really do it justice. It's more of a token thing, but it does put some pressure on the other parties involved to, you know, look at things down the road. Councilmember McGurrow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to clarify or to clear up what Councilmember Miller brought up about, you know, us staying out of that part of negotiations or contract drawing up. 100% supportive of that, that's the intention. City staff, you know, City Manager Roloff and his staff and Transportation Director Collins, just like they do on any other transportation agreement, UWO, Fox Valley Tech, they'll handle those details. I'm not qualified to, and I don't pretend to plan like I am or pretend like I am, so full faith and, full faith in those individuals that they can absolutely handle that part of the process.
So can we word this where it gives you guys the weapons you need?
Wait, hold on a second. So we have a motion to amend to...
amend the resolution. I'll just point to...
To two years.
Two years.
Technically, there's no motion on the floor. There's no motion to amend on the amendment yet. She just asked if they would be interested in a friendly amendment that the city attorney does not enjoy.
So we have a motion and a second on the First Amendment.
We had to vote that up or down.
Point to procedure assistance here on the second.
So here's what I would say. If, I would support two years as long as there's verbiage in the agreement that in order for us to participate the second year, there has to be a third independent party, private sector, if, or the school, and if that's not provided, then the school district has to cover then two-thirds of it.
Can I address that without hitting the button?
Yes.
Thank you. And that's the...
We're making progress.
That's the full intention of Part II, is that the additional, if additional private sector donations are not there, it does not fall on the City of Oshkosh to pick up that tab. That's the intention and the impetus behind Number Two, that school district either has to pick it up or somebody else has to pick up that slack, that the City of Oshkosh would not be on the hook for that, on that part. Because I know that that was something that I heard loud and clear from my fellow councilmembers, you know, what happens if it's not there?
Because we're just shifting the burden onto the taxpayer, and that's not fair, that's not what we set out to do here, so that needs to be carved in stone.
But the taxpayer is paying regardless. It's the same taxpayer paying the school tax as they are the city tax.
I just don't want to get the commingling of funds confused.
But to your point, Ms. Palmeri, though, other townships will be benefiting from the residential and commercial.
They won't. There are no city bus routes in the townships.
No, no. If it's outside of school activities for jobs and shopping and those types of things.
They're riding our buses for free.
They still are not going to ride the buses from Town of Black Wolf or Town of Algoma.
No, but if they're a town resident, student, that's it said, say, Oshkosh West or South Park or any of the schools gets on the bus, because he's a student, they're able to ride it. But they live in the Town of Black Wolf or Algoma or Oshkosh, and they're not paying anything for it. Those taxpayers are.
I'm willing to take that.
Yeah, and it's, I'm okay with that, too. I'm just...
Again, it's an investment for future ridership. They might move into town.
Correct.
Keep in mind, folks, we are looking at some pretty significant subsidies and some tax incremental finance and development, and we're talking about, we're building more and more housing with fewer parking spots. Okay? The other piece that hasn't really been talked about here is how the city benefits from less traffic congestion, right? How the city benefits from being able to provide affordable housing, because parking spots are not cheap. So I just bring that in, because we haven't really talked about that. But so far, where we're at is two years, and you're saying, can we build some language in or give staff direction to build some language in that says after that second year...
It's already there.
That, okay.
That this goes to the school district.
Or a third party.
Well, in order to support it a second year. And again, I'm very conflicted on voting for this, Mayor, because...
I hear you.
I struggle with telling all other areas of our population...
You're not worthy.
That you're not worthy, or that you're not as important. And I hear all the time from council about inclusion. And I also ask myself, those that we do have agreements with, that may not be in middle school, high school, elementary, but we have the agreement with Fox Valley Tech, which supports a number of those that are trying to get, you know, like a certificate or some type of training to be sustainable, as was mentioned up here, that entity pays for their students, because technically, they have no charge as well. So what are they going to say, and how is that, is that going to jeopardize our relationship with them? The university, they did not renew their...
They did not renew.
Right, because everybody said, well, UWO students...
They purchased, they still purchased passes on behalf of their students.
Right, so because there was the thing that we were supporting free busing for tech and UWO, and that's not the case. Those entities pay for their students to ride at no charge. So again, I mean, I just, I'm definitely a minority in looking at the totality of my responsibility to the community, but for gosh sakes, please make sure that you limit our financial liability in every regards moving forward, and that you direct staff to make sure that that language is in there, as I'm very confident that our staff and our, and our city manager is extremely capable of putting together something that's not hopefully going to jeopardize us too much from a budget standpoint.
City Manager Roloff, the Catcher Ride program that GOE DC offers to employees to get to and from work, who pays for that?
That's funded by a grant that GOE DC acquired from the state. I believe it was the Department of Workforce Development.
Okay, all right. And we do have some other reduced fares for different groups of members that has been discussed. We increased the rates. You know, I can certainly appreciate exactly what you're saying, however, I don't think it's excluding, we're trying to include and, you know, provide, I think, some assistance, and it's a starter. It's not a promise forever. It's a starter, it's a seed. We talk about building our ecosystem for entrepreneurship. We talk about building our, you know, our infrastructure, and part of that is transportation and access to transportation. We talk about our social connectedness and our neighborhoods and our seniors, and I think there's an intergenerational social connection opportunity when there are more youth on the bus. Yes, Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you. This is probably my last comment, you know, in regards to this. Some of the things that, you know, we talk about is very hypothetical, as far as like, you know, will increase ridership from kids? And I would encourage every single councilmember to call the communities and ask them what the realities are, and the school district with the realities versus hypotheticals. I watched this council go through line item by line item by line item of how we spend our money, and it's admirable, and I don't disagree. Like I said, I would love to step up and assist for a year, but please do your due diligence and contact those communities and talk to the school districts and ask them what they're actually experiencing, because we need to be looking at, we need to be comparing apples to apples, because I hear some of the studies and some of the things from other parts of the country, it's not the same animal. So I would encourage my councilmembers to please do that before, obviously, if this goes through and that two years is out.
Councilmember Crowsey.
One final comment. Couple of years ago, we had a vote on a bathroom that we had to decide to spend $140,000 on some windows and some sidewalk squares. That conversation was very quick. We passed it, we added $140,000. We're asking for $30,000 a year. I think that bathroom, if that's justified, this is more than justified. Thank you.
Are we almost ready to call the question? Councilmember Allison Osby, go ahead.
And I appreciate what Mr. Crowsey is saying, but there was a lot more to that bathroom than just windows or whatever. And again, you know, there's not enough time up here to talk about, you know, the overall. So I do agree with you. I think we've had plenty of comments, and we should move forward.
Councilmember Crowsey.
One last thing. I mean, there's a lot more to go into that bathroom, but it was a renovation that came back up to council to make it look better. So I mean, it was beautification. That was the difference. I was fine with the bathroom, but I voted no, obviously, on that. But it seems pretty clear here.
And I would remind council, too, that every time we vote on a tax incremental finance district, we look at so many elements of the public benefit and the public good, and we're okay with deferring increment that comes in to help build our community, grow our community, to the tune of extending or delaying receipt of some of those dollars. And it's not a bad thing, it's a great tool. But when we talk about the impact on services, public services, it's a very, I don't think I've ever heard in 10 years of listening to discussions about the different tiffs and tids, you know, how, how that delay in receipt of that impacts school services such as transportation and that. And I'm not, I'm not trying to say that we need to get in their business and tell them how to spend their dollars, but I do think that this will be a good faith effort to build that trust and that relationship and to have those other players at the table bring in more to this as well. And I think we have the opportunity to do something no other city has done in Wisconsin. And the state statutes, maybe because they were done in the 1960s, you know, I'm looking at the history of the city option that the school has, they were designed in the 1960s. What was going on in the 1960s? Suburbanization, right? So maybe, you know, at the same time where we're working on this, the state could also be looking at revising those city options and then how the school is allowed to only provide for some and not for others.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. In the interest of time, I think we've got a win-win for the kids here and possibly a 7-0 vote here, so I'd like to move forward before we snatch the feet out of the mouths of victory here, so I'd like to vote on this.
Call the question. All right. So we are still on the amendment, so we need to vote on the amendment first.
Herms, you got the amendment the way you want it?
Yep.
All right.
Staff okay with the amendment?
All right. Okay. So we'll vote on the amendment.
Allison Osby.
Very concerned, yes.
Herman?
Aye.
McGurrow?
Aye.
Crowsey?
No.
Peschall?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Palmeri?
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right.
I'll wait to vote on that.
As amended.
As amended.
Any further discussion before we vote on it as amended? All right. Please call the roll.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
McGurrow?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peschall?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Palmeri?
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right. Thank you. Next, we move on to council discussion and direction to City Manager, future agenda items.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The FGM Public Safety Facility Study you received in your Friday packet, so the workshop is scheduled for the next council meeting at 5:00 PM. Representatives FGM will be there to talk about their recommendations and...
Thank you all. Thank you.
Excuse me, let's...
That's okay. No, if you want to give everybody a chance, sometimes it can get a little noisy, so...
We'll just let the room clear here for a second, and we should be wrapping this meeting up soon, and we'll take a break.
The second workshop is the Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Corporation. They're going to be doing their presentation on March 10th, and then we've pushed back the workshop on the website, changes to the March 24th meeting. So those are some of the upcoming meetings going on. Number eight is the location for the 2020 Festival Foods Fireworks Show. As you know, we had it last year at, off of Pioneer Island. That was part of a joint effort with a local group that put on a great festival over at Riverside Park and Leach Amphitheater, also due in part to the construction on Hazel Street. There was a lot of great feedback about wanting to continue with downtown, but the sustainability of that location or that general area downtown is a challenge. Pioneer Island, potential for redevelopment in the very near future, and I think there was hesitation about committing Pioneer Island with the possibility of some development taking place. Don't want to get everybody worked up, but at the same time, we have to respect private property that they want to do that. We need a 500-foot radius, so other areas in the downtown are a very big challenge. And really, if you take a look at, for example, we did all this sawdust district discussion tonight, our goal is to have these areas developed with buildings probably near within 500 feet. So we really found ourselves back to Menominee Park, even though there were some people who were really advocating for a location downtown. The group that put on the festival this past year will not do another festival, they're not interested in doing a festival at Menominee Park. It was very amicable, don't get me wrong or anything, but, and we consulted with the police department, they're very familiar with managing the fireworks event over it. Our goal is to have these areas developed with buildings probably near within 500 feet. So, we really found ourselves back to Menominee Park, even though there were some people who were really advocating for a location downtown. The group that put on the festival this past year will not do another festival. They're not interested in doing a festival at Menominee Park. It was very amicable. Don't get me wrong or anything. But, and we consulted with the police department. They're very familiar with managing the fireworks event over at Menominee Park. It'll be easier without the other issues going on with sawdust days and whatnot. So, the plan is to have it on July 4th at Menominee Park, and that's one where we know we have a good 500 feet because we can locate it in our park and we'll be okay, unless there are no questions, if you want me to keep moving on.
So, we're back to Menominee Park for 4th of July.
Yeah, and I don't see us coming back in the near future with any request to move that around. I think part of that was give everybody a location where they know they can depend on for 4th of July, so...
And do I recall from last council meeting, there was going to be another event, one of those Beer Garden evenings, Mr. Mauer, maybe?
That's for Wednesday night, once a month. That was what the council voted on at the last meeting.
Okay, so it didn't coincide with 4th of July weekend?
4th of July is on a Saturday, so there wouldn't be a conflict.
Oh, okay.
So, that's that, and unless there are any questions about those.
Nope. All right. Next, we have the second opportunity for citizen statements to council. Do we have anyone registered?
No, we do not.
All right. And then we have council member announcements and statements. Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a quick statement. Some of you may have noticed I was not at the last two council meetings. I apologize for that, but unfortunately, I had some health issues with a hernia disc that was pinching some nerves and did not allow me to go anywhere other than the house. So, I'm back in the saddle. I will have to have surgery in the near future to take care of the problem, but hopefully I'll still be able to continue to serve the remainder of my term. That'll be expiring this spring.
We missed you.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate the comments.
And City Manager announcements and statements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The outstanding issues pages in your agenda packet, the one I want to point out in particular, the anti-vaping ordinance, we had every intention of putting it on this week's agenda, but because of our little computer issues, we weren't sure if we were going to have it ready, and so we just didn't put it on the agenda. I put a note in there that the state's pondering legislation of its own. I forwarded council a link to what the state is looking at. It has nothing to do with regulation of vaping. It's really more about encouraging programs for vaping secession and limitations, but in a grant program that is for...they said organizations, not communities, so it's totally different from what we were looking at. City Attorney's been looking at it to make sure that no one could make a challenge to it. There are some issues out there that people are questioning some of the validity of these ordinances, so we're putting something together we think can stand that, the test that we are aware of out there. So, we've got that, and I think that's all I have in that area. Follow-up from January 29, strategic planning. Last week's packet, I gave council the last two citizen surveys. There was some discussion about getting citizen input. With the time we have to get it done by the end of the first quarter, that would be difficult because our plan right now is to deliver a draft of the plan at the first meeting in March, which is the day after State of the City. That makes it a little awkward for adoption on March 24th, assuming that that's, you know, that's...then, once we deliver it to council, it's your prerogative what you do with it, but our goal is to get that to you. The purpose of the getting you the last two citizen surveys was to give you an idea of there is a gap analysis that's very, very similar to the gap analysis that the council and department has conducted, and I think there's a lot of similarities. And I showed some...we do the citizen survey during the winter. Snow removal gets a different rating versus the larger picture, but I think those are ones that are out there that, you know, you can certainly take into consideration. But, yeah, I think there's validity to that because residents say those things. So, I thought that might be helpful for you as you review the draft. When we get the draft to you, you'll be able to see how the citizens have sized things up compared to the discussions you had at your retreat. Status of recovery on recovery of network virus. We are still in recovery mode. There's a lot of good things that we've got going on, a lot of emails, but as Mr. Collins will attest to, he just got his email back up today, and that was through a little begging on Mr. Collins' part because, you know, there's a lot of stuff they rely on data. We had a discussion earlier about collecting data. We wouldn't have been collecting data over the last two weeks. I mean, Jim and his staff have been very patient because we can't get to everybody, and we had to prioritize. Getting our financial area in order was appropriate, getting our public safety back up to speed. All of our public safety isn't back up to speed either. We are still working on different things. So, until we know that, and then speaking of viruses, guess which division got hit with a flu virus this week? Our good old IT people. So, this has not been...and the contractors they had hired, they were way too close. All kidding aside, that has put us back, so we're still working on it. City of Racine has seen a similar hit. They were hit the Friday after us. I made a comment because Mr. Newman pointed out that it was called a splash screen that has every evidence that it's a Russian nature, not Vladimir Putin or anything like that, but the reality is it's something from Russia, and that seemed to get everybody's attention. Oh, my gosh, we need to talk about the Russians. No, we don't. This is occurring throughout the country. We've learned some lessons, and when we do the postmortem on this whole thing, we'll be taking a look at things we need to do, and I think you're going to be getting other updates in the coming weeks as we learn more. But we're still in recovery mode, so I would...just now, my network didn't pop up just before the council meeting, so I didn't have the agenda. I had to scramble, and I didn't have the nice little index of agenda items. Thank goodness, it was a short agenda. It's little things like that that are quirky still happening while we're going through this, so please bear with us as we go through that. The public's been awesome. The public has been so understanding. So, members of the public, thank you for putting up with a great deal of inconvenience on both their end as well as our end. And then, in your packet is also the 2020 special assessment rates. With the discussion of special assessments, you know, we point this out every year, but it probably stands out more, and it went up on the concrete side, it went up 11% to 15%. We do it based on the prior year rates. As the competition for contractors increases, and I know a lot of you know that that's a reality out there, the rates are going up. I would draw your attention to because while from 2019 to 2020, it's going up, for example, 48 feet non-residential is technically going up 14.97%, but it's $5 a foot lesser than it was two years ago. So, I would...we put two years in there to give you a little historical perspective because they do fluctuate. They do go up and down. I know that was a concern. Mr. Mogerhour knows this, that during all the discussions, well, this will always go up. It will go up and down, and that's just the nature of that beast. If the price of oil goes up, our asphalt costs are going to go through the roof, but those are things we have to manage on an annual basis. For this year, asphalt's only going up, you know, not quite 5%. So, those are the rates that we're required to report to council, so I've got that for you. And then, just two little upcoming announcements. Ms. Hubrig asked me to mention, to remind everybody, February 18th is the primary. It's only for the State Supreme Court. Polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and just a reminder that District Four has been moved from Webster Stanley over to the Oshkosh Public Library. So, did I do my job, Pam?
You did great.
Very good. Thank you. And then, just a reminder, March 9th, State of the City, doors open at 6:00. State of the City address starts at 6:30.
Speaking of which, the State of the City, are you going to be getting some information to council members soon about our participation in that?
Yes, I will. We had a meeting scheduled for the day of the virus attack, so now that we have access to that, we will be contacting you very shortly. Look for an email from Emily. Thanks for the reminder, though, because that's kind of thrown us off. So, we're a little bit behind, but we'll be ready by March 9th, and we'll let you know what your role is in terms of the awards and things of that nature. So, thank you for that reminder.
I did have a request from a community member to address some of our housing in that State of the City address. I think it was requested last year, too, so I'm not sure if we got a chance to do that. All right. So, next we have...Deputy Mayor will read our motion for closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The council may convene in a closed session pursuant to Section 19.85, Parent 1, Parent G of the Wisconsin State Statutes to confer with legal counsel, who are under advice concerning strategy to be adopted with respect to litigation which the city is involved in relation to the city's WPDES permit and in relation to the Upper Fox and Wolf Basin Lake Winnebago TMDL, in pursuit to Section 19.85, Parent 1, Parent E of the Wisconsin State Statutes to discuss bargaining options, strategies, and parameters for competitive bargaining reasons required a closed session related to negotiation for the purchase of land for slum and blight elimination, 700 block of South Main Street, Pioneer Island and Marina, south shore redevelopment area, 1,000 block of South Main Street in the Sawdust District, and pursuant to Section 19.85, Parent 1, Parent G of the Wisconsin State Statutes to confer with legal counsel concerning strategy to be adopted with respect to litigation which the city is likely to become involved in relationship to the transportation utility and transportation fee proposal.
Do I have a second?
Second.
That might be the longest one ever.
No discussion? Any discussion? All right. Take a vote.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Mogerhour?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peshaw?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Palmeri?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Take a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Should we take...[1755.11]